Another line chart. This one is comparing, first, general fund levy. It's here since 1999, which means it had 20 mils. Okay, next we've got budget per pupil, the statutory budget per pupil in the general fund. And then the blue chart above that, the blue line represents this budget per pupil from the state, increase for inflation using the same CPI during that period. Now, it's very interesting to me that here in 2009, that number was within $725. That's the narrowest it's been since, somewhere down here in the early 2000s. But, the trend unfortunately has been, since 2009, further decreases in the statutory budget per pupil in the general fund. Okay, we're now at, this is 2014, earlier still at one. Same $3,838 budget per pupil for these two years. That's coming down from a high statutory budget per pupil of $4,400 in 2009. Now, 2009, we were at $5,125 here as inflation, or using the CPI. That rises using the same CPI actual in 2013 and 2014. That number's grown $5,890. So, we're looking at, in 2014, that difference is going to be $1,971. Now, we're looking at throughout the district, how funds were spent. And, for most patrons, they ask, how much is spent on education? And that number sounds, or that question sounds pretty straightforward, but it really depends on how you define education. Because if we were to take instruction, I'm sorry, define education. If we, I define instruction. If we were to take instruction here, 45 percent student support services certainly would be instruction. And, the instructional support staff, which, oh, there it is, right here. Certainly qualified for that. But, most of the healthcare payers here, 14 percent, most of that deals with the instructional staff anyway. So, if you were to add all of those together, that number comes to about 67 percent. There's an argument too, between the good service operation, facilities, transportation, are they part of providing instruction to the students? So, it really depends on how you define instruction, as to how much instruction is spent within the district. But, that's the primary purpose of the district, because it's all actually, its operations revolve around that. This bar chart represents the annual funds expenditures, however, it does apply here. You'll notice facilities acquisition issue was a large number in 2010. And, oh, what else could we show? You see the dollars spent, continued the increase in the core instruction category. Operations and maintenance took an increase that's about $1.3 million as a result of the facilities. Other areas tend to remain fairly steady. Healthcare payers has been, head service network is increased with the new bond issues. I think this next set of charts, it would be really interesting to, what we did is select 13, well, including, because we have said 13 school districts across the state. The red line represents actual full-time students. Whereas, the bars represent the total ability for each of the districts. Now, you'll notice here that while Garden City is 10th overall in MTE, and then, of course, talking before it really takes off, we can get to like Lawrence, San Antonio. But, look at the middle of that. It's low, it is the second lowest overall. It's lower than, than two of the three that are larger than MTE. And it is lower than all the others that are smaller. And what's significant is, the one that's lower than MTE is Perry County. And currently, when we're down to, they did have a $50 million bond issue, so we deal with our budget, I believe in the year, fiscal year ending 2014. This number could be very, very nice here. But, this is the, as for Riley, Junction City. So, they've got outside funding also. Now, this has the same levy these graphs side by side. However, what this does is break it down between types of levies. Everyone has, in yellow, has the same 20 mils general fund. What varies significantly here are the red pieces to these bars, representing bond and interest. And depending on where a district is, in terms of needing new facilities, it's going to have a big impact on what this looks like. Or, if their facilities are subsidized, would also make a difference. Now, the green is the local auction budget. This is also called separate budget. This is what I mentioned earlier, that the districts have had to go to, to increase the levy to finance the funding that is no longer being provided by the state. So, oh, and the blue represents other, predominantly, that this is the capital outlay. The back range from general formula, so the size is eight, if there's been resolutions to provide that. Let's look at the next graph now. And it looks at specifically the L of B, village. Garden City uses 22.11 percent of the general fund expenditures. That's the major. Now, the maximum is 31 mils. And the C, the down north, is 31. A number of that, 30 or 40, which is under 30. Only three, Manhattan, Garden City, and the four Riley, Perry County School District, Junction City. So, I think that's very telling, because what that shows us here, in terms of stewardship, how the district is seeing the lower capital outlay, or lower local auction budget, in order to fund its fundings. Now, we're getting back here to the levy that I mentioned earlier, only this time, we're putting all the way back to 1994. I mentioned in 1999 and after, there was a 20 mil levy for tariff funds. So, the rest of the levy of 20 mils is for other purposes. You see here, Garden City was gradually coming down, you know, somewhat significantly in some years. And then, just when the bond issues come online, the levy increases, and then levels off, well, to a slight increase. And this last column is 2014 for the, now, in some more comparisons, we're looking now at the taxes paid on $100,000. In this situation, Garden City is the second lowest, 528. Perry County, again, is the lowest, and they're at 481. And Manhattan is next at 534. The highest goes to Soto, which is in Kansas City area, at 900. Okay, now, looking at taxes levy per actual full-time program student. This shows us here, Garden City is third lowest in Perry County lowest. The highest is Lawrence, at 4,933. Then Soto, and Manhattan, close. Garden City, though, you'll notice, is second for lowest, and they were in 1846. And, questions on reading that? Additional common situations? Well, a couple factors, a couple things that we've seen here, have been maintaining minimal tax limits. Higher reliance on state aid. And, an overall, I guess, growth that the districts had to deal with in terms of inflation pressures, and with declining revenues from the state at the same time. So, those challenges, those themes are continued, I've seen in that. But, it's, it's very fascinating, to me, at least, when I look at the numbers, that paint the picture. I don't think it tells you anything you didn't already know, but it shows you the numbers, and perhaps some degree as to what your, your, your.
I have a question.
Yes, Jim.
This report is for the school last year, the, right, yeah?
Fiscal year 2014. Now, some of those graphs do have 2014 budget numbers projected.
Do you see anything, because last year, we have a new high school. Do you see anything that we should be looking at, that now, we don't have a new high school, that we should be looking at? Anything that we should be out there, that we might want to keep an eye on?
Well, as you're looking at the budget, I think that's going to put more pressure on the local auction budget. With state aid, those way, with the facilities way, is that representing about 500 students this year 2014. And about 3,800 more students is going to be, apparently, in the future. I guess, Tim, I don't pay attention in terms of, because this argument determines what you have to consider. I will tell you that you're not the only district that's in that, of, and in the end, we could have stipend legislators, and, and funding transition, it's going to be, there may be some other options we have available. Love their, their sales tax, and those levied by, believe it was, Soto. Operations may, I believe, what happened was, city levied the sales tax, and then committed it to, district has the power to let this go through. So, there may be some options like that. How often do you see that?
Just one comment, Gary. I'm happy to see that the contingency was very great, obviously. If that was a question last year, that's not enough to what we do, and we can, but yet, if we have a large number there, that probably should be in the taxpayers' pocket. But, I think where we're at now, is definitely better than we were last year, and so we do appreciate that. Okay, Jay, were you part of the process this year, working with Gary and the audit?
Oh, yes.
Yeah, absolutely.
Even though it's more of Kathleen's year.
It was, it was Kathleen's year. But, it was, and a lot of it was my staff as well, that was, and getting the information, gathering the information for them. But, we were very close over that while they were in the field.
So, it's good passing up this one, right?
Oh, yes.
Good, good. Just wanted to clarify, I mean, I knew the answer to that, but I just wanted to put it on record.
And some of that's covered up, in truce, in this comments, as well as this. It's really no change required here, it's a staff, it's very professional, you know, it gives what we need, we need, they've demonstrated through their quality. And, well, yes, this group has the administration as well as the board. It's very important, quality situation.
It's going to be on this slide. We summarize some of the comments we have from the audit here on this slide. I know you've got a copy of the, what we call the manhunt letter in your board cabinet. It does have a cover letter on it, that defines what a material weakness and a significant deficiency is. But, as Gary mentioned at the start, the district has no material weaknesses. You do a very good job. The comments we have are immaterial insignificant items, that are best practice suggestions, things to keep on top of, so controls don't deteriorate, so that at some point, we would be in a situation to have a material weakness. But, what we have is, is not going to lend itself to that for a while, I don't think. There are a couple immaterial statute violations that are required to bring to your attention. One of them deals with old outstanding checks, the state allows you to put those back, reinstate those to cash after a couple of years. So, it's really more of a reminder to KJ and her staff to monitor that each year. The second statute violation, however, did deal with, a few funds had immaterial deficit cash balances that you're in. Three of those happen to be in grant funds, so that's not a good rule, because they're on a reimbursement base, you gotta spend the money every day. A couple of the funds, though, were in student activity funds, at one of the middle schools. So, just a reminder to keep on top of those, and monitor student activities, so they don't become negative balances in the future.
Teresa, can I run to you? Last year, this came up, if I remember correctly. And didn't we decide at that time to keep that at individual schools? I mean, didn't we divide it out then, instead of having one student fund at a time?
For reporting purposes, we, we consider it one, but each, each club and activity within the district has its own fund in this student activity area.
So, this is a discrepancy that was made last year and again this year?
Yeah. I don't think it was the same fund, though.
But, the same type of, same, okay. Done.
I don't think those are the rest all the way.
I just, you know, the concern, the same type of concern came up two years in a row. Is it a business practice that we need to look at, or?
And I thought it said, I don't think it was the same student activities. And I know that the district, as part of their comp that will cheer a school, starts back up, they need with all those activity fund, law and flurries.
People involved, yes.
And, and, where's she throwing the mix of the students and stuff?
Sure.
We're talking total $696, going to, this year. They're doing a pretty good job, it's just keep on top of it. As far as dispersness, just a reminder to be sure and monitor the coding. We had one of the items be tested with coding to expenditure account, that probably wouldn't really apply to, as those were reviewed, to review for those items. As far as inventory, this is one you've seen in the past, but not in recent years. The district has started doing both perpetual inventories and a physical inventory. It was just a matter of, in the process, they want to carry those two numbers to see if they're ready. And we know KJ's been on top of that already, and new processes, like, take care of that a little bit over. As far as federal funds, the type one program requires time and effort reports to be coming for the employees' hours and activities. One of them that we selected for testing, we weren't able to locate. We saw numerous other ones, your staff were sure that it had been completed, a matter of, they just couldn't lay their hands on it in time. Just a reminder to monitor those. And then, we always like to let you know, there were comments from the prior year that were resolved. The district is monitoring due dates on the payments for, if that's the state policy to review, to make sure this person's checks are received properly. We need the cafeteria account and the student funds, has been designated a petty cash account going forward, and it's being reconciled. And then, the district's doing a much better job on monitoring this federal program drawdowns, so that we don't have excess reimbursement sitting on, you know, accruing interest at the last round. So, overall, the district and staff are doing a great job on insignificant items, you know, the material.
Just some advice I'd like to give, you know, we, two board members each meeting are asked to review payable, account payables. And, that's pretty daunting, I mean, there are usually a lot of payables to look at. Is there something you can help us, to help us do the best job we possibly can? I don't understand, I don't want to know if it's coded correctly. I generally just look at, do that expense make sense? Do we need to stop like Dr. Eighth, that go to the spa every week? You know, those kind of things.
Maybe just what's, uh. You know, I think you're on the right track, if that's your opinion, probably. You've got to read that on your professional staff, and, and there's controls, but by the time it gets to you, hopefully, those things have been caught. I think your overview is at a higher level, that you want to get, that you look at every detail, but if things do pop out at you, yes, you need to ask the question.
Well, it seems like the first couple of years that I was charged with looking at them, I would take questions to Kathleen, and she would always have a perfect answer for it, which was, was great. But, then I started feeling silly, you know, asking about every little detail, but yet, I don't want to be hands off. So, I guess, if there's advice that you can give us for things to look for when we review payables, I'd take your advice.
Okay. Look, look again, I'm hopeful, if something definitely brought to you and asked, you should say, if you're going to ask a question, it's probably something we're going to ask you, and you can look at too, so.
Okay.
If you're on the right track, what happens?
Yeah, watch it, Dr. E. If I could just further expand on that. I think I've tried to make it very clear to my staff, that it's very welcome for them to come and ask me questions about things, as far as why are we spending money on this? Because a lot of times, especially now, I'm asking them, why are we doing it, why are we spending money on this? Because I'm new. When it goes to the coding part of it, I've actually had one other person in the step in the process, she was not a new person in the process of approving POs, but I added to her, to her requirements, actually, proven, is to, I've shown her how to look at the actual account, and drill down to see what it is that we're coding this to, and does it make sense? And that's not anything that she had done before. And I think just having one more level of, we all make mistakes, so, it can easily get by me, it can get by someone else, but if we have one more person in the process adding an eyeball to it, we can maybe catch that mistake. We're not going to catch them all, but we can catch you more with them. So, I have tried to at least address some of the issues that they brought to our attention. And, I'm very comfortable with my staff, it's comfortable with my doors open to go. Is that quite makes sense? And I found it was really good, I'm amazed at the reach process that they have, is not only checking each other, it's promising to get with that one. But, to question, where is it going, why are we spending the money out of here and not out of here, or why are we spending the money?
Right.
So.
Well, this district is, you know, transparency is part of why it's so successful, and why we're so diligent with our criteria of ours. So, I, I guess, more for a matter of fact, I wanted the public to know that we are fantastic, and we can have a regular communication of what you just described, so, thank you.
And as you review those payables, I mean, I had a list of questions from Alex today.
Good.
And he wasn't even on the list for you payables, so.
No.
That aside, the question is always, well.
Yeah. Great, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm not excited. What kind of business house are you in for operation?
I think we're going to let you wrap it up then, with the letters for the government body.
Well, the next letter in your bound copy is the letters for the government body. And this letter covers various information that's required we communicate with the party audit. The first section goes over what the auditor's responsibility is, which includes pressing opinion about the financial statements, any reform in an audit in a planned timeframe, and communicate any significant matters that were identified during the audit. And further goes on to talk about the district's accounting practices, which it includes accounting policies, which are described in no one of your financial statements, accounting estimates, with the most sensitive estimate being your estimate on outstanding accomplishments and accounts table. And then, the final aspect of your accounting practices is your financial statements disclosures, and the most sensitive disclosure is your compliance with your safety step toward your checklist. The letter that goes on the stage is there were no instances of fraud identified during the audit, and no significant difficulties, all being those in dealing with management. Professional standards also require us to communicate any corrected and uncorrected statements that were identified during the audit, and attached to the back of your, what's the government body, is a list of those statements. And then, also attached to the back of that letter is assigned representation by management. Management may consult other companies during the course of the year, and to acknowledge those such complications here. And then, no matters resulted in our retention or progress.
Thank you. And once again, I guess if I were to sum it up, I would say, keep up the good work. Love to be proud of you. Any party questions? If others come up, please let us know, we'll send you command.
Very appreciate your time and your pass time, please.
Thank you, Tony. It's a pleasure to work with the district.
Thank you. I don't believe we have any votes, comments, who see me?
With that stated, Mr. President, I would be approve and consent agenda.
Any questions, any discussions? All of the papers, you can hand, vote. All right, time for a nightcap.
Well, while Casey gets ready, we're going to let you kind of experience what our kids do at home, in the classroom. I put an app on your iPad, do you eat? I put an app on your iPod called NearPod. This is an app that we use a lot at both middle schools and the high schools. And this will give you a sense of the tools that we use. This, huge bonus is for, we like those. So, we set up our presentation, and there will be questions that you have to answer, When you open NearPod, did you tap it and open it? And it asks for either teacher or student? You can say, okay, if it asks for your, if it wants to notify, you say, okay, just be real agreeable. Now, you're going to be a student today. Now, you're going to be a student today, you're going to tap student, and you want to enter a code. And it is Y-E-O-D-W.
D? Yeah, Jason.
And it's download. That's good, that's success.
Rachel, you want to stand here? You happy I mentioned, you don't want to come around and block these?
We're going to utilize several people in our presentation. We're going to change our order just a little bit, because we have two teachers here to talk to you. They have kids, they would like to go home, so we're going to move them to after Mr. Morales' kind of introduction. Then we're going to pull up our two teachers.
Sorry, I'm chasing kids tonight.
Why chase your kids?
Don't chase you.
I'm not very fast. So James, do you want to start? Oh.
Did I all sign in?
Did I all sign in?
So thank you. All right, this is pretty much a vision for implementation. This is our second year with the iPad initiative at high school. We believe like USD 457, that it requires active support, investment, and high expectations for the students to achieve with the iPads. Again, we looked at the strategic plan of the district, basically saying that ongoing technologies to improve instruction, as well as aligning resources to higher levels for student achievement. So we're, we're right in line with the district in what we're trying to do with the iPad. One of the things that we need to know, and that you all know, is techno, technology's no longer a luxury. You have to have it, students need it to be successful. Students also need it to be college and career ready. I mean, it's, it's there. The iPads are portable and accessible technologies for our students. I do also need you to know that this is an ongoing journey. There is not a destination. I mean, we're always moving. You can't say we got there, Mr. Dennis came the other day and said, okay, Mr. Morales, tell me what the plan is with the iPad that you need here. Where do you want to be? And we look at, there's a lot of data, and what data do you have to say, okay, we're here, here's where we're going to be. So we looked at a lot of different charts, and that's what they're going to show you later. Lanny and Casey did a lot of research, we did some surveys, did a lot of other things. But I think I need you to know that with any change, there's a lot of questions and concerns that you do, especially with the amount of money that we invested. We want you to know that it is a work in progress, and we're continuing to improve that, I believe, each year. We provide professional development this year. We're always trying to provide professional development for our teachers. Again, the students are way ahead of us with the technology, they're waiting on us, and we're trying to stay as active as we can, trying to catch up. I will tell you, there's a lot of difference between our ESL students and our SPED students with the new technology. It's great, they move faster, they learn quicker. Also, some of our advanced students, how fast they're moving with the technology. With the continued support of the administration, the ESE staff helping us, I believe our students and teachers will get there, and we'll have a better, so the numbers can be very interesting when you look at it, and you can ask questions, and they do very well. Thank you. Is that fast? She's timing.